Good evening, I call this meeting the Magnolia Independent School District Order. But the record shows that according to the board members present, that this meeting has been duly called and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. So if everybody please stand, Mr. Duncan's going to lead us in our pledge.
It's been a longstanding tradition in Magnolia ISD to say a blessing before the meeting, so if you'd like to do it with us, please bow your heads. Dear Lord, we gather here tonight in fellowship in your name, and we ask you to bless our country and bless our state, certainly bless our school district. We ask you to bless our students and our teachers as this school year winds down. This is a time of year when traditionally, bad things can happen to some of our kids, and we ask you to please watch over them and watch over our teachers, and please just take care of them. And we ask for all these things in your name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Grace and Thomas, come on up here and lead us in our pledges. In fact, you can come right here, and we'll do the US first. Are you doing the US one? Perfect, and then we'll do the Texas right up. Is that good?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, and if you'll stay up here.
Thank you, Dr. Stevens, for the praise this week. I am very proud to introduce to you Thomas Hopper, the Lion Elementary Student of the Month. He is a fourth grader at Lion, and he has been at Lion since kindergarten. He's here with his parents Troy and Myra. He also has his brother Ty, who's at Magnolia Intermediate, and his sister Jacqueline, that's also at Lion Elementary. He is an outstanding student with such a caring heart. He loves math, and this is evident by his 20,000-plus stickers in first in math, and his many Player of the Week recognitions that he's received. Thomas even received Player of the Month for the entire district for October, which was super exciting for Lion Elementary. He has been an All-Aid student with his entire elementary career with excellent conduct and attendance. He's also been recognized as an All-Star Achiever, which is a special Lion recognition for citizenship. He said he's gotten it every single year since kindergarten, and usually in the first nine weeks. Thomas also led our UIL Members Sense in chess puzzles groups, and he helped bring that district championship title back to Lion Elementary this year. His teachers always have great things to say about him. Ms. Roden is here, Ms. Maxwell, and our counselor, Ms. Barrett, are all here to support him because he's such an amazing guy. But when she found out that she was getting a Hopper, she said, "I couldn't be more excited." If you've never met a Hopper, then you're missing out, because they're the best, well-mannered kids that you'll ever meet. Thomas is determined, dedicated, caring young man, and he's respectful and never has a negative attitude. Not only that, he cares for his peers. If somebody needs help, he's there for them. If I ask him to help a student, he doesn't growl or groan, which is pretty amazing for a fourth grade boy at this point. But what 10-year-old sets goals for himself? Well, Thomas does. He believes that hard work will take him far in life. He has a vision and never lets anything or anyone sway him from either in the class or on the field. He's a big football player. I love the way he wears his Spartan football hoodie with pride. He's proved that perseverance, attitude, and self-confidence mold you into the best that you can be. And Ms. Roden hopes that you never lose sight of that, because you are just truly amazing. Outside of school, Thomas can be found on the football field. In fact, he enjoys all sports, whether it's just throwing a football with his dad or kicking around the soccer ball with his sister. He's a good brother. But he would like to attend Texas A&amp;M. That was very exciting for my chance. And when he grows up, he would like to be a professional football player, and he wants to work on solving the problems of the world. Sounds a little J.J. Watt-ish to me, which is a pretty good thing there. But for these reasons, it's easy to see why we picked Thomas Hopper for the Lion Elementary Student of the Month.
So it's my pleasure tonight to present Grace Smith as Magnolia West High School Student of the Month. Grace is a fantastic kid. She is in a full slate of academic courses. She even takes extra courses at Longstar, Calculus III. I think she takes there some other extra courses, just so she can stay up on the latest and most cutting-edge topics in math. She's also in our band, and she's received several accolades for her performances there. She played four instruments? Oboe, piano, sax? She's also involved in several different clubs. She's in Mu Alpha Theta, which is a math honor society, Spanish honor society, National Honor Society. And she also founded the STEM, the STEM Club at Magnolia West High School. And so she is the founder, and she started that there too, which is a science, technology, engineering, and math club. She's going to attend the Massachusetts Institute of Technologies at MIT. She's simply going to major in artificial intelligence. Computer science with a focus in artificial intelligence. Grace is also here with her family. This is with Kenny and Lydia Smith, and also her sister Natalie. But there's something I always like to say, especially when they get into high school. We all know that the students who are here for Student of the Month, they have all these different accolades. They are in all these different clubs, they're in extracurricular activities, they're taking advanced courses. But the thing that I like most about Grace, being able to present her, and this is what I learned just in talking with her teachers and my own experiences with Grace, is that Grace is brilliant. You can't deny that. And she's the kind of person that gets uncomfortable about people saying that about her. But, you know, Grace has no sense of entitlement. She is not arrogant at all. She's just very humble, very kind, and I have no doubt that her degree in computer science from MIT and an emphasis in artificial intelligence will get her a job one day, a very successful job. But what I think will make her a successful person is the fact that she is so humble and that she lacks arrogance, that she doesn't have that sense of entitlement. She's just an overall kind person. So it's always my pleasure to be able to present kids that have all those qualities. And so it's my pleasure tonight to present Grace as the Student of the Month.
We got to our spotlight to vote on. Congratulations to you. Come here. Come up here, Thomas. We've got an Aggie in the crowd, and MIT in. And we want to see you up here again, and we want to see what happens in the next couple of three or four years with you. That's awesome. And I told you guys, you're in thin air, because we do this two times, nine times a year. Eighteen times, eighteen students get to do this, and we've got 13,000 in the district. So it's a big deal. So congratulations to both of you. Sure. Glad to have you here tonight. Okay.
So far, so good. I think I'm up now. Recognition's right. Well, we've got a couple of guys in the house that we've had here before, and just want to take another opportunity to thank them for their hard work. They represent the Magnolia Parkway Improvement District. That's Mr. Carl Gerhart. Carl, stand up. And I'm going to call it by Dr. Tom Grayson. And you don't get to use that term very often, but when you're getting introduced in front of the school board, we're going to refer to you as Doctor here. But they work for the Improvement District and Board, and the reason we're here tonight to thank them is because they have completed two big projects, and I want you to take a look at some of these. And we don't have quite enough pictures here. But the road widening program that was in place in Egypt Lane in front of Ellisir Elementary has made a world of difference for our parents getting their kids to school at Ellisir Elementary. And so, guys, we can't thank you enough for your decision from the Parkway Improvement to use those dollars to help widen that, and it just made a tremendous difference. And not only that, the area-wide detention that you guys, the project that you undertook back there, not only will it prevent some of the erosion and flood issues that we're seeing in the area, but because of that, it's helped us to reclaim a large portion of our playground that before was. We've got additional area for that school to use as a playground in the back, and we'll fence on it. But thank y'all so much for putting those dollars to work for our community and helping out the school district as a part of it. And we just wanted to recognize you again tonight, and thank you for that work. I think, Ms. Felinski, do we have some of the parents from Ellisir that are here? Do y'all want to say something to this group?
Yes, we just want to say we are incredibly grateful for y'all getting that, taking the road taken care of, especially because it's made it such a safe environment for our roads, especially during pickup and drop-off. We actually have turn lanes now, and so traffic can still flow through, and everybody is happy and nice to each other. And so we are very happy to have them. Having the back to the ground that we are going to be able to utilize, the kids are super excited about having all that extra space, especially the teachers, because now we can have meetings at all at the same time and have it where everybody is happy there as well. So we are so grateful. Thank you very much.
It was a little bit of a process to get it through during the construction, but all the parents played well with one another, and we got the work done, and it is just such an improvement over there now. Thank y'all again.
Yeah, thanks a bunch. Okay, we've got a little recognition, Mrs. Johnson.
Absolutely. Good evening. It's my pleasure tonight. I get to introduce the national merit finalist for the district this year. Back in October, we introduced you to some national merit-commended students and some national merit semifinalists. And out of all those students, we have a status of a finalist here in Magnolia, and we're excited about that. Which means what's going to happen next is Travis goes on, and he's already been competing for approximately 7,500 national merit scholarship awards worth about $33 million. And this is probably one of the longest scholarship competitions, because it started back when he was a junior. During October, he took the PSAT, which is the national merit qualifying test. And then if he doesn't find out his final status till this past month. And so it's a long competition, but it's also a large competition. It started out with approximately 1.6 million students, and we're down to the final 15,000. So we're super excited to have him in our district, and I have Caitlin Kane that's going to tell you all about Travis Ford, our national merit finalist.
So first, I'd like to thank Mr. Stevens, Mr. Blizzard, and the board, just for giving us this opportunity to recognize Travis, one of our awesome students at Magnolia High School. Here with him tonight is his mom and his band director, Mr. Martinez. So we're just thankful for y'all and your support that you have for Travis. Along with being a national merit finalist, he's involved in multiple things at Magnolia High School. And I'm actually going to read him, because I don't want to leave anything out. I want to make sure he gets full recognition for everything he does. So he's a bass player, netist for our wind symphony, and a section leader for our marching band. He competes in UIL science and math. He's the captain of our science whole team. He's a senior officer of Mu Alpha Theta, and a member of National Honor Society. In addition to all that, Travis is a national AP scholar, which is granted to students who receive an average score of at least a four on all AP exams taken, and scores of four or higher on eight or more of these exams. So Travis studies, he does all the work he puts in, and it's very, very applicable, and he just represents Magnolia High School more than anyone we know. So after graduating from Magnolia High School, he plans on attending the Texas A&amp;M University and majoring in computer engineering, while also being a part of the Texas A&amp;M Courts of Cadets. And he actually auditioned this past weekend, and he made it, so we're very proud of Travis and all he's done to represent Magnolia High School the past four years, and know he has great things in store for him in the future. So please show me him recognizing Travis Ford.
That's awesome. He's going to go join his brother at Aggie, and that's great. That's awesome. All right, Coach Bernie.
Yes, sir. Coach Stevens, school board, it's my honor to recognize the Magnolia West girls' basketball team. They were 27 and 8 this year, made it to the regional tournament. You know, it's, girls, go ahead and start making way, Coach Simmons. First of all, I'd like to thank the parents that are here tonight to honor us and recognizing them. But what I love about these two ladies is that they love to compete. And when I say that, is that you can tell that when you go to their basketball games, the way they play the game. They play the game fast, they play it physical, they play it aggressive. Bottom line is, they're fun to watch, and they play the game like it's meant to be played. And so, you know, for these ladies to be recognized and have the seats that they had, I'm extremely honored tonight to be able to recognize them and all your hard work and efforts that you've gone into this season. So at this time, Coach Simmons, come on up. She's the head coach of our basketball team, and so she's going to take this time to recognize each one, and we'll go from there, Coach.
Hey, we want to thank y'all for the opportunity to come out tonight. I want to start with introducing them. Megan Donnelly is our freshman. Does she look great tonight? She looks so great tonight. We have never cranked her, ever. So I'm going to let y'all figure it out now. Megan Donnelly, freshman, sophomore, Kamari Portalis, junior, Cameron Jones, Gracie Dome was our manager this year, basically another assistant coach. You need to ask them for your backpack. Senior Omari Trejo, senior Lizzie Lofton, junior Maddie Christie, senior Kendall May, senior Hannah Edelson, junior Ally Wright, junior Jordan Wiley, Coach Hebert, JV coach, Coach Dunlop, my freshman coach. Not here today because she is a stud, pool athlete, is Alyssa May. She's in Vegas playing volleyball. Must be tough. I do have some kind of individual honors that these girls did. They bought into a system, and they, I wrote my stuff down because I get long-winded. They bought into a system that we planned for them to run, and the trust and love that they had for each other, they were able to bring that to fruition on the court. The work that they started last summer in the preseason and throughout the postseason wasn't fun or easy, but it paid great dividends. And that hard work is now the set standard and culture at Magnolia West. Coach Hebert, I'm going to brag on you a little bit. Coach Hebert's team saw the ripple effects that these young ladies set forth, and made sure that our younger kids kind of followed their lead in example. His JV team finished tied for first in district, and his team went 29 and 3. So our junior varsity team is rocking and rolling too. Coach Hebert, for me personally and for this group of girls, was an integral part of scouting, watching film, stats, helping me to prepare the absolute best game plan possible. His game plan for Georgetown, and even the one we lost, was spot-on for high tower. So he's awesome. And these girls, I don't know if you know all the work that went in behind the scenes from Coach Hebert. Kendall May did this part without him. Coach Dunlop, freshman coach, also district champions. Her team was 22 and 2. So if you want to add the 27 and 8, the three losses, two losses, as a program from freshman, JV, and varsity, we were 93 wins this season, 13 losses as a program. I'm pretty proud of that. These are the girls that set the bar. They set the standard, and they work hard every single day. When these seniors were eighth graders, our program was 7 and 20. Five years later, we find ourselves with a season record of 27 and 8, reaching the regional tournament for the first time in program history, and back-to-back playoff appearances. We had 10 of these girls that earned district honors, and we brought home three out of the five superlatives honors for 1958. One thing I'm super proud to tell you is our academic all district. Just step forward and wave when I call your name. These girls were academic all district. Megan Donnelly.
Megan.
Kamari Portalis. Kendall May, who's not here. Ally Wright. Lizzie Lofton. Hannah Edelson. Hannah Edelson. And for our athletic accomplishments, honorable mention all district, Lizzie Lofton. First team all district, Kamari Portalis. Alyssa May in Vegas, and Kendall May. Our superlatives, which are kind of the big tie-doo awards for the district athletically, we have three out of the five. Defensive Player of the Year, created in a lab, Cameron Jones. Cameron Jones was a unanimous decision, by the way, from the coaches in the district. Coach of the Year. And then our most valuable Player of the District is Hannah Edelson. Hannah, just go ahead and step forward for a second. Hannah was first team all region, first team all state, according to the Texas Girls Coaches Association. And she was Montgomery County Offensive Player of the Year through the Connor and Currier. I guess that's all I got. Sorry. That's all I have. Cameron Jones was also chosen on the All-Star Team for Region 3 through the Texas Girls Coaches Association. These girls, they're fun, smart, loyal, trustworthy, and really great athletes. They compete to win and be successful. They play for each other, they're teammates, they're school, they're families, and each other. They do it with class, they do it with integrity. I couldn't be more proud of their season, and even more proud of who they are as young ladies. I love you. That's all they show on the talk. Megan likes the talk.
Great job, ladies. You represent us well. We appreciate that. That's awesome.
So far, so good.
Absolutely. Just keep getting better.
Tell them.
All right, sir.
We'll give a little break, get a chance to pat some bats.
That's right. Anything else you want to cover?
Say hi to these folks, and maybe get some of these kids, I know they want to go home and study.
Yeah, we're not inviting anybody to the lecture, but what we're going to do is we're going to take a five-minute break before we start the business section of the meeting. So those of you who do want to scoot out, you could, but you're invited to stay.
Unless you like basketball.
Okay, Ms. Hinckelman, have we got any others to sign up to speak besides this one that you gave me?
Just the one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and it's Ms. Emily Koshery. Okay, while you're making your way up here, thanks for coming. While you're making your way up here, there's something I'm required to read to you, so I will. Participants must have turned in a request form and must have followed administrative channels before addressing the board. Participation is limited to five minutes. Any complaint or charge brought against an employee by name opposition must be addressed through the proper administrative channels and will not be addressed directly through this agenda item. Delegations of five or more persons shall appoint one person to present their views before the board, and please note that the board of trustees shall not deliberate, respond, or make decisions regarding any subject that is not included on the agenda that is posted in the summary. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Good evening. My name is Emily Koshery. I currently have three children in Magnolia. Up until two weeks ago, I had four. However, I was forced to withdraw my son from Magnolia West because he was not in a physically, emotionally, or psychologically safe environment. Sorry, I'm very emotional about this, because this has been a very, very long journey. Brendan came to Magnolia in fourth grade. When we transferred into the district, our purpose of moving here was because Magnolia had such a wonderful reputation for the Special Education Department, and he is a special education student. So we came in in fourth grade. Fourth and fifth grade, he thrived. He did phenomenal in the district. Unfortunately, when he hit junior high, everything changed. In seventh grade, he was bullied. He was hit in the head with rocks. He was denied faith. He was not given any of his accommodations. It continued into eighth grade, where the same group of children continued to bully him. Anti-Semitic comments were yelled out in the middle of class with teachers present. He still continued to not get his accommodations. It was also during that year, the Art Committee had decided after an evaluation given by one of Magnolia's evaluators that he would be removed from special education. The determination was made based on an evaluation where the evaluator had never even met my child. It was based on data from fourth and fifth grade, and nothing new had come out of it. After a lengthy process, he was put back in 504 at that time, and continued from eighth grade into ninth grade, where he was continually denied faith. Accommodations weren't met, services weren't met. In September of this year, he was placed back in special education. At that time, it was determined that Brendan needed counseling, as well as some simple accommodations. From September until December, he didn't receive any of his accommodations or his counseling services. In November, Brendan started vomiting. He started off vomiting once or twice a day. By November, he was vomiting 25 or more times a day. He was being sent home daily because of the vomiting. I had spoken to the school, we had taken him to Texas Children's Hospital, obviously. The gastro doctors there at that time had placed a feeding tube in through Brendan's nose and through his intestines, and suggested Homebound, recommended it, because at the time, they felt that he had gastroparesis. So that continued. Brendan went on to Homebound in December. From December until last week, he received Homebound services. Unfortunately, he was still denied faith. The Homebound teacher, who tried very, very, very hard to help Brendan, wasn't given any of the educational material she needed. She wasn't given any of the notes to support the stuff that she was being given, so he would be given a test without any notes beforehand to study. Because of this, we had made the decision to look into other alternatives for Brendan, because Brendan has not been educated all year. It was also recommended by Texas Children's, and after talking to several doctors, it was determined that we would go to Philadelphia to Children's Hospital to see their gastro department, because they have a higher level of gastro motility clinic. At that time, while we were there last week, it was found that Brendan does not have gastroparesis. Matter of fact, Brendan's stomach is working perfectly fine. Brendan, as many of you don't know, has Tourette's Syndrome, which is a tic disorder. He has involuntary motor tics and vocal tics, so at times he makes sounds, sometimes just blinks his eye or moves his arm in a weird way. It was found that Brendan's vomiting is related to a motor tic in his stomach. The reason it began happening is because of the amount of stress that Brendan's under. His Tourette's, if anyone, and I know many of you know Brendan.
Ms. Koshery, we have one minute.
Okay. Many of his tics are exasperated by him being nervous, extra stress, extra anxiety. The motor tic that's causing him to vomit slowed down a little bit, the vomiting stopped once he was removed from school. However, it would continue when the Homebound teacher came. Basically, I'm here today to address this with you. I've tried numerous times to discuss this with you, other than in this board meeting. No one has ever responded. But I have two questions for Magnolia at this point. One, what is Magnolia going to do to compensate my child for the education that he was denied this year? He's taking star, he's a freshman, he's not going to pass, he hasn't been given any of the material to pass. And two, who's going to compensate Brendan and help him get over the psychological trauma that he's endured? Because teachers couldn't give him a simple accommodation, a copy of notes, extra time, and counseling once a week. They're the only accommodations.
Ms. Koshery, your time is up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for taking your time tonight. Okay, the next item on our agenda is regarding the announcement of the board's annual credit hours. And I'm pleased to announce in accordance with chapter 61 of the Texas Administrative Code, that Chuck Adcox, Kristy Baker, Joe Duncan, Sonya Evil, Kelly McDonald, Dr. Travis Moffitt, and I, Gary Blizzard, have met or exceeded all required hours of schoolwork continuing education training from January through April of 2019. So there's no action there, just we'll continue on. So, thank Dr. Todd, you're next.
Well, we've had a lengthy superintendent's report to go through at this point, but really, it comes up to the consent agenda is the next thing. It's a busy time of year, a lot of things going on at this point. Seems like we're in the banquet season now, but other than that, I really don't have a report at this point, so we can move right on. Next to John. other than that, I really don't have a report at this point, so we can move right on. Next agenda item.
Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on to our consent agenda. This portion of the agenda consists of items that will be routine and will be enacted by one motion unless separate discussion is requested. So has anybody got any question on items 8A through G on our agenda? Okay, so we need a motion that we approve, consent agenda items 8A through G. Motion by Joe, seconded by Kelly. All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Brunner, you're up next, sir.
All right, I'll be brief. I was threatened back there, so. Worked it this quickly. Basically, we came to a point where we had to go out for a bid for trash services. So we put an R.P. out on the 28th. We had six companies pick up, you know, the paperwork, but only two submitted. One of which was WCA, which is who we've been using, and they were the low proposer. And we're making a recommendation tonight that we go ahead and approve WCA for our waste services with a new contract.
All right, we've had that.
Pretty simple, just.
Anybody got any questions? Had enough material, we can review it, so.
We appreciate that you give us all your data points, so we can compare apples and apples.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
Makes it easier to review.
Actually, Adam Stern put that together. I have to be honest. I'm just here to be the messenger tonight.
So don't shoot the messenger, right? All right, no questions? Okay, so if there's no further discussion, then we need a motion that we approve, R.P. number 030519, WCA Waste Corporation for Solid Waste and Recycling Services for MISD effective May 1, 2019. Motion by Chuck, seconded by Kristy. All in favor? Motion passes.
So Tim, why do you think that the others didn't submit? Did you get any feedback from them? Was it that the volume was too much for them to handle, or?
I think it may be some, you know, some of them may have been, it may have been a little bit, you know, maybe more than they could handle. And then some of it, I think, is that maybe it's too small. You know, I was hoping for something out of some of the other companies, the bigger companies. But, you know, we didn't get that type of interest this time. So I don't really have a good excuse as to why, or a good reason why we didn't have more actual bidders. But the good news is, is that we came in under our target number. And a lot of that was because, even though we were using WCA, they had basically sent us a letter that said that they were gonna have to go up 10% on the cost. And we, at that point, we were already in kind of a month-to-month, and we're like, well, before we do that, we're gonna test the market. Well, their number came back in under what it would have been had we stayed with them. So we still saved a little money, which with the same contractor, you know, it worked out. But, yeah, it's not as much interest as we had hoped, as far as actual bidders.
Never hurts to ask a question twice, right? Thanks.
So you're gonna tell us about the junior R.P.?
Yeah, the other item I have tonight is, we basically wanted to, well, we're pricing out a building and for, from a scheduling standpoint, and from the contractor that's available to us through basically a JOC delivery method, which we've used in the past. But this is through one GPA, one government procurement alliance. It's a pretty good deal because it's only a 1% markup over what the contractor's cost is. And that's kind of unheard of in a lot of these delivery methods. That's a pretty, I mean, that's a pretty good deal, it's a quick response. So BNC priced out this project that PDK Architects put together for us. We've been working on a classroom facility for the JRTC program, because right now they're in some pretty shabby portables. So, give them a permanent building. The project came in at $369,644.14. We had $400,000 budgeted for the project. Feel pretty good that we have good coverage over this, and like to move forward with it. Questions about how we arrived at this delivery method or this particular group?
How long will the project take?
I can't guarantee you we'll have it open for the start of school. And I've relayed that to the JRTC program, and they're fine with that. It's a couple of classrooms, we can get some maintenance guys, we can move them over a weekend. So, you know, they're just very happy to get it, so we should, you know, as soon, I would think we'll be done sometime in September. But it may not be at the first of school, so we'll move them over as soon as it's ready. The portable that we're moving out to locate this building is basically not occupied right now. It's in very poor condition. We're hoping we can move it out, we may have to just tear it down and place, put it in a dumpster. But either way, they're not occupying that building, so it's not gonna hurt them for us to be finishing up that project, you know, while they're in school. And then as soon as we're ready, we'll move them in. So, good question, though. I'd like to say we'll be done this summer, but I can guarantee it.
And this is the whole scope of demolition of whatever you have to do, I don't know how much you're tearing out with just that one building?
Good question, but no, this does not cover the cost of that. What I'm hoping to do is, is I've got some people that are actually interested in it, as in, if they can come and haul it off and not cost us anything, I'll let them have it, so to speak. That would be the trade-off. Worst-case scenario, we may have to demo it, put it in a dumpster, and I've got costs for that. That's not covered under this, though.
We have some wiggle room under the budget, though.
Yes, and it's not a huge number to do that.
Right.
I appreciate your breakout of the costs that you provided to us, and I like that it's under what your estimate was, too.
Yeah, me too.
It's a good number.
It's cost plus 1%.
That's why you guys, that's why I have a job, keep doing that. No, it's always good to come in, you know, under our estimated budget. As you all know, I mean, just FYI, we're also working on an expansion to Alpha Academy. You know, hoping to bring you good news on that next month, so.
This project has been, we've talked about this for a long time, I hope it will be something toward the end of the bond to be able to accomplish it, but those portable, these guys have been in really in bad shape, and they're kind of cramped for some of the space inside. So this is gonna take care of their rifle range area storage and some of the office things, so it's really gonna be a neat project for them, so.
Yeah, we're actually, we're actually gonna turn in the classroom space. You know, we had, we had generally, we had first talked about just building a rifle range, and then creating classroom space where their rifle range currently is. And then we just thought, you know, we'll have to spend a little bit more money on this new building. It'll save us money on the renovations that we would have had to done there. I believe this is the better overall value, and it's only one step. So, once I got with the staff over there, they were just very excited about this, so. But it is our recommendation that we go ahead and approve construction of the building for the 369, $644.14 by BNC Constructors through the JOC delivery method.
Any more questions? No more questions? All right. If there's no further discussion, we need a motion to do just that, that we award BNC Constructors a bid for the construction of the JROTC classroom building in the amount of $369,644.14. Motion by Joe, seconded by Kristy. All in favor? The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Brunner. What else we got?
I think we're in that two executive session for consulting.
Yep. Anything else for now?
We'll come back out.
Sure. Okay.
I would advise the board of one thing, but we'll notice that our CFO is not with us tonight. And I would just like to say that, reasonable, because he is in Austin, and there are two bills right now. One is pending for the State Committee on Rural Utilities Affairs. Tomorrow, the House one is being heard. But it's all about the price adjustment for waters that municipalities can charge to taxing entities such as school districts or non-taxing entities such as churches. So that is being heard, and Eric is there representing us in Austin tonight, and maybe possibly tomorrow for the House version of that, so. If you're wondering where he was, I mean, I know he kind of fills a spot over there, so.
Fighting the good fight.
Fighting the good fight, absolutely. Is time well spent?
We hope so. We'll see, yeah, well, he did.
All right, guys, anything else before we go? Okay, so at this time, the board will now recess to move into closed executive session for the purposes permitted by consult legal counsel in closed session to receive legal advice regarding Level III grievance appeal pursuant to Texas government code 551.071. Hear and consider Level III Student-Parent Grievance Appeal under Magnolia ISD Board Policy FNG. This agenda item may be held in closed session pursuant to Texas government code 551.082 and 551.0821. Discussion of purchase, sale, exchange, or value of real property pursuant to Texas government code 551.072. And personnel discussion recommendations pursuant to Texas government code 551.074. That's a mouthful. Thank you. Okay, the board is now in open session. The time is nine o'clock. Do I have a motion regarding the appeal?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As you know, MISD takes confidentiality of student records, including disciplinary records, very seriously, and guards them to our utmost legal ability. With that in mind, I move that the board affirm the decision of the administration and deny the grievance appeal and the relief requested.
Okay, thank you. At this time, the board will now recess to move into closed executive.
Second.
Pardon? Oh, oh, hey, the motion, all right, we need a motion for this, right?
We need a second. We need a second, he just made a motion.
Okay, motion by Joe?
A second.
Seconded by Kristy. All in favor? Okay, sorry, I stepped out of bounds there. Are we good? Okay. At this time, the board will now recess to move into closed executive session for the purposes permitted by discussion of purchase, sale, exchange, or value of real property pursuant to Texas government code 551.072. And personnel discussion recommendation pursuant to Texas government code 551.074. Okay, I need a motion that we adjourn this meeting. Motion by Kelly, seconded by Chuck. All in favor? Meeting adjourned. Time is 10 o'clock.